...featured in this video. There are eight convicted drug dealers in this video, eight. There are several who have been charged with firearms violations.
Crazy.
These are not kids in these videos. These are young men with the capacity to run a business better than any college graduate. These young men will make Bill Gates look like an idiot. Theodore Shockley, convicted, corrupt organizations, criminal conspiracy, delivery of a controlled substance. Nassar Jason, corrupt organizations, arrested by the DEA, the Drug Enforcement Administration of the United States of America. Steven Singletary, corrupt organizations, criminal conspiracy, delivery of a controlled substance. Joakiel Jones, delivery of a controlled substance, firearms not to be carried without a license, persons not to possess.
You can go find this on...
Richard Johnson, criminal conspiracy, delivery of a controlled substance. Keith Anderson, delivery of a controlled substance. Jemichael Flanders, robbery, delivery of a controlled substance.
And he was a kid.
Nail Bia, delivery, firearms not to be carried without a license, possession of a weapon on school property. What is even more concerning is what I can't tell you about the individuals in this video. These are real people, not actors. It may be entertaining, but it's very real. Some of the individuals in this video are dangerous, and they've made it clear what their intentions are: to defend their turf, to shoot people who get in their way, and that they are a team and they are recruited. This individual here sat outside of our police stations and took photos of himself with the money he made. He is incarcerated. This is our Flanagan Park. There's more money in that car than probably half of us making a year. Why? Thanks to an unholy cocktail of adolescent dissatisfaction, peer pressure, and the marketing genius of shrewd Colombian businessmen. Tired of dealing with the hassles of crack cocaine, the Colombians have turned Philadelphia into the second-largest heroin distribution center, moving tons of astonishingly pure, competitively-priced product from the Badlands to the hinterlands. Colombians looking to diversify their investment portfolio staged a bloodless coup, taking control of the heroin business from the Southeast Asians. They did it by the green seed approach to dopinomics. They boosted the purity tenfold. They slashed the prices by 60% until people were crazy. Folks, our people are crazy. Four people OD'd in the last three days. It worked. In short order, the Colombians cornered the market, creating new wealth for neophyte cartels while turning Philadelphia into a dope depot second only to New York in gross heroin tonnage. The flow of drugs into Lancaster, Dauphin, Lycoming, and numerous other Pennsylvania counties, combined with the influx of dealers fleeing the crime during competition in Philadelphia, has created havoc. Pennsylvania Attorney General Kathleen Cain caught more than a few people by surprise when she told a legislative budget hearing she was losing sleep over Mexican cartels. "They're in Pennsylvania, they are taking over our neighborhoods," Cain reportedly told the Senate Appropriations Committee. Law enforcement authorities have agreed Mexican cartels are top wholesale suppliers of heroin to the Philadelphia region. The business side of heroin right now is being sold mostly as a rack. A rack consists of 140 bags of heroin. One bag of heroin contains 3/100ths of a gram. Not a lot. One rack is about 4.2 grams. A rack costs about $600. For $600, you can buy 140 bags if you have a business. Let's look at a hypothetical small drug clip. Let's say six local dealers pull their money together. They sell six racks a week, one each. Six racks times $600 is $3,600, initial investment. Six racks equals 840 bags. 840 bags times $10 a bag equals $8,400 per week. Subtract your $3,600 from your investment and you're making $4,800 per week tax-free. Four weeks per month, $4,800 times four, $19,200 a month, tax-free, selling heroin. $19,200 times 12 months equals $230,400 per year. $230,400 divided by six, six people, is $38,400 per year selling one rack a week. That is more money than some people in this room make at their jobs. Let's look at some numbers. I told you there was eight in that video. They're convicted. Say there's 100 drug dealers, small time, not big fish, we're talking small fish, in the city of Williamsport right now, 100. Let's say they sell one rack apiece per week. 140 bags times 10 is $1,400 per person per week. $1,400 times four weeks in a month is $4,800 a month. $4,800 a month times 100 dealers is $480,000 a month. $480,000 times 12 months, $5,760,000 a year. The Williamsport Bureau Police have a $6 million a year budget. Do you wonder why we can't get anywhere? Crisis. This problem is bigger than any of you could possibly imagine. This is not about kids shooting hoops. We have reached the point of a crisis. It is time to wake up Williamsport. This is no time for politics because people are dying. If we can't stop talking and start walking, may God help us all. I implore everyone to put all hands on deck and forget about who will take the credit. Due to the fact that many of these issues are only talked about behind closed doors, I decided it was time to tell our community the truth. We have a real problem on our hands. We cannot save previous generations from this cycle, but if we can unite and put our heads together, just maybe we can save the next one. Those children in that video who are picking up money from their idols, those are the kids that we need to save. We can't save the ones already in the system. It's too late. But in the face of the heroin crisis, if we don't do anything now, we are in big, big trouble. I will reveal just one idea that I will be advocating for on behalf of Team Williamsport. After the success of the High Point Strategy that has been conducted in 18 communities across the country, and maybe more by now, I will be advocating for this model to be implemented here. This model is based on intervention in lieu of arrest for first-time drug offenders. If they deny the intervention, incarceration is pursued. A confrontation is done between the community and the offender, followed by a confrontation between the police and the offender. The offender is shown the evidence against him or her, and he or she is given a decision to change their behavior or pay the full price of their bad decisions. This offers first-time offenders a chance to turn their lives around prior to being pulled into the system to be part of the next cycle. There are many other ideas and methods that I will be advocating for, and no doubt there will be some who will agree and some who will disagree. We cannot continue with the status quo. We will not arrest our way out of the drug issues in our community. Team Williamsport is a concept that I have put together, not as a vigilante movement. I will not endorse nor will I condone citizens engaging other citizens using methods of violence. That is not what this is about. We want to bring bright minds together to come up with long-term solutions to age-old problems that are often ignored due to the controversial nature of some of these issues. I'm looking for a group of diverse, good people who are truly interested in breaking the cycle we've been stuck in for 30 years. I don't care if you used to be a drug dealer, a drug addict, I need your help. I want your help. The community needs your help. This is not about being a Republican or a Democrat, it's about common sense. This is a community problem, and it will take a community to fix it. Thank you. If you have any questions or comments, as I said before, the rules are: you will raise your hand, you will state your name, and you will state your address. Three minutes.
Yes, I do have a lot to say, and I realize that this will be a continuing thing. I apologize for earlier speaking out of turn, I wasn't really sure what that turn was. I do realize how...
Speak up.
I do, yeah, let me present that.
What is your name and your address, please?
My name is Natalie Cherry, and I live at 1104 Franklin Street, Williamsport. I realize as I started a Facebook page, how heated this was, I did have to delete some inappropriate comments. I don't like any of that language, partly why I was in a public, and I don't feel comfortable in this room. At that time, but I just thought initially... Let me give you a little bit of a background. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son. There he is, cute as can be. I go to Memorial Park. I've been there four times this spring. I didn't see the trash, and if I did, I would have picked it up. I recently restarted my other Facebook page, I'm sorry, it's the way to communicate with young kids, it gets things happening really fast. I restarted my environmentally-minded, community-minded group called GRO. I logged back in and I had 157 friend requests from Williamsport residents. I'm not that cool. Nobody really wants to be my friend, but they want what the group represents. And then I started this group. This group put the hoops back. Since Friday, got 329 likes. I didn't do it, it just happened. I started a petition, hey, what would happen if we, who would like the hoops back, petition the mayor? I mistakenly put Rick Maravito's name on that, not knowing like he really had nothing to do with it. But I, as a citizen, would have liked to be informed that the hoops were going to be removed for the second time. I was, I did know about it the first time because it was presented to the city council, I heard about it, people heard about it, and I was ready to organize another trash pickup. We've done this, we've done trash pickups in the city several times, in this neighborhood, because I do realize that this neighborhood, people don't really care about as much. I like the park, but...
Do you think maybe you guys could set up a meeting?
Yeah, yeah. We have to get to other people. If you want to call my office, I'd be glad to sit down and chat with you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Someone else? Yes?
Yeah, my name is Mari, I live in, I'm at 762nd Avenue, and I also go to Williamsport, and I would like to say I do appreciate what the police do. However, showing that video, to show that video, we have to challenge the music industry, from rock and roll to rap to everything, R&B, because that's what they talk about, money, sex, and drugs in their video. I don't know the gentleman that rapped the song in the video, but that could be his way of trying to do something different. That's what rappers do, Jay-Z, a billionaire, that's what he raps about still. So, that to me wasn't a good representative of what goes on. As well, I go into Memorial Park, I pick up trash. The trash cans are at the hoop, over where they park, and then it's another trash can down by the pavilion. You have to run across to the whole park to put something in the trash. There used to be one right by the basketball hoops, it's not there anymore. I don't know what happened to it. Second, thirdly, I don't know how long the video took, but what I don't see is police officers walking the street at the park. It was brought last year, I didn't come last year, about it being a problem area. It should be more police officers, community watch in that area to challenge people who are leaving stuff, to people were smoking, doing whatever they were doing in that video. It takes a while to produce the video. Cuts, startups, where was the intervention? It was, we were told, don't do this last year, and then this year, it's like, we're taking the hoops down. It's like, if your kids don't clean out their room after you tell them to do it, you don't just take it away permanently. You have kids that, that is their outlet. As adults, we failed them by not putting a stronger prevention that this wouldn't occur. There are kids that, my nephew was in the video playing basketball, he's in college.
You say it's part of the music industry, but I don't want to invade you, but do you allow your children to listen to that foul...
Children is four and two, and no, they will not listen to it, but as a society, that's what we should stand for.
And we were listening to that, actually, that type of foul language.
Here's the problem.
The type of foul language.
The people in that video, there's their criminal histories.
The type of foul language was... The type of foul language was constantly at that park. My recreation director, Justin, could you talk about that? You were there, you heard after that. Do you think our children should be exposed to that?
I'm not saying our children, I'm not promoting that and saying that our children should be exposed to it, but I'm saying for the children who, basketball is important to them, going to the park is important to them, as adults, we should have more preventative measures that our basketball hoops didn't just get taken down. Because that's what I felt, I go to Memorial Park, I also go to the other parks, there's trash notes parks, there's graffiti with F-U, suck this, suck that on the parks. I mean, I just think we, as adults, have failed the kids that need basketball, that need the outlet, and what's going to happen when this same problem goes along?
Well, we do have basketball in other parks, first of all. I understand your frustration, but as I said when I first started out, my role is to protect the health and safety of citizens. There was going to be a shooting in that park, those same elements, look at Flanagan, and look what happened there. And I cannot live as mayor to have that on my conscience if a person was killed or an innocent child hit by a bullet. That's my, you may disagree with me, and I'm sorry that you do, I'm sorry that you do, but as I said, I'm here to protect children, and then you see in this video, kids that are being corrupted with the money, they're taking over the turf and giving money to kids to say be a drug dealer? That's sad. We live in a sad society that people want to prey on children.
That may be, the parents, maybe they need some education and somehow, we talked about, you talked about how we can help people with criminal backgrounds, it's hard in this town if you have backgrounds to get a job. It's hard. I know plenty of people that want to change their lives and they don't get jobs. So maybe that could be a way we can start, a preventative measure. I'm open for change and willing to help.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just have one thing to say.
Your name and...
Regina Henry, 844 High School. I appreciate what you said, and I appreciate your determination to do things right. That park is crowded all the time when the weather is nice. If the police would dedicate one or two of their drivers to do 15-minute checks through the park, walk the park, it would deter a lot. I'm out there sometimes, I never see them, they're on the outskirts, so if they would come into the park, since we are about a community, come into the park and do, and that would deter them. Nobody wants to sell drugs in your presence, and so if you made your presence felt when there's nothing negative going on, perhaps people will be ready to say, okay, well, we're not doing this here. But your presence is felt in the midst of some kind of crime, where a lot of innocent people are not there, it's the criminal element that's there. So bring your presence to the park. You're welcome, we would love to have you there.
Ma'am, I appreciate your insight in this matter, and I agree with you 100% that there's a problem. This problem with this epidemic is so big, the average person don't understand. There ain't enough members of the Pennsylvania National Guard to be everywhere we need to be to address this situation.
And I understand that.
I am trying to hire...
I'm not asking you, I mean, you have to be where you have to be in ways. However, you closed one park for the basketball hoops. Now you took away the one thing that is positive, but what you showed on your video was all the negative. Let's get the negative out and leave the positive in. What you did is you took away something good. And I, you know, like, nobody wants to see anybody die from drugs. And our children are dying from it. And our children are selling it, but we don't want the negative element to be where you guys show up. We want you to come where the positive stuff is, to keep the negative stuff away.
And believe me, we want to be there.
And it's, at least 150 people in that park on a good day. So that's a large group of people with cops with patrol. It's not like they're wasting their time on 20 or 30 people. It's a large...
You're going to see officers in the parks.
Pardon me?
You're going to see officers in the parks.
We want to see them now, you should see them before we see the hoops there.
They will be there.
Okay, when will they be there? Now who's the hoops are not there?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we can argue basketball all day long, I mean, I think part of the majority of us in this room would really love the sport of basketball. I remember a few years ago in Kennedy King Manor before that...
Could you state your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Richard Benson, 2400 Newbury Street. Thank you. And I don't know who ran the program, I don't know if it was Ronnie Gamble was involved in that, but I was present and I saw a program that was working and brought a lot of people to the court. And I remember they had a high-tech scoreboard, I don't know who organized that or put that together, but I personally would love to see something like that again. Oh, and I have a situation in Memorial Park, is I have three small children at home that we frequent the park, but not anymore after finding a range of condoms and baggies and just god-awful language. You know, I'm saying they're pushing my two-year-old on a swing, and I hear M and F for, yo, nigga, what's up? I don't want my kids to grow up here and there, you know? And I think that as a resident of Newbury, and I know a lot of these kids aren't from Newbury, they're coming from different parts of town, so if people are going to come together and congregate in the area with a passion for basketball, sure, let's give them a place where they can do that, but in a more structured environment, away from our swimming pool, away from, we don't have problems that, I don't know how anybody in this room can defend the problems on the basketball court in Memorial Park, because we don't have those problems in Elm Park across the street, we don't have the problems across the street at the skate park, we don't have the problem next door in the Kitty Park, which is what? 100 feet away, not even? Or in the swimming pool. So, let's all be honest here, we have a real problem on the park. Maybe not every day, maybe somebody might randomly come in and say, oh, I love the park, but for me, taking my two-year-old, it's like a game of Russian roulette, and I don't think that's a fair, I don't like the odds of that.
My name's Alan Taylor, I live at 320 Royal Avenue. That Kennedy King program that you were talking about, I pretty much helped organize that, I ran that for Ronnie Gamble. I watched the video that you showed, but I could also show you a lot of positive things that, when I had my basketball team out there, started about four years ago, Coach Rizzo, my church, my coaching staff, we had players out there at Flanagan Park, Saturday morning, Tuesday and Thursday evenings, from 6:30 to about 8, until they end up closing, or they took the hoops down one day. And we actually put a YouTube video up, and a lot of people made a lot of noise about that, and they ended up putting the hoops back up, but then they had the shooting, and since you brought it up, I'll mention that, had that shooting out there. I was actually on the baseball field, coaching my son's baseball team, and so I was out there, but the amazing thing was this, about two to three weeks prior to that shooting, there was a game on that same baseball field in the park, East Lycoming and, I want to say it was maybe Hepburn or Old Lycoming, they were playing, there were a number of police officers that were out there during that baseball game. Now when they have those basketball games that were being run, I don't even know who runs that league, there's no police presence whatsoever, okay? But the thing that bothers me is, we're getting our community and public excited about all this negative stuff, and you're talking about a video, so they took some time to put a video together, but we're not showing any of the positive things like Ms. Ali mentioned about what's going on over there. And that kind of bothers me. You got a number of kids that go there, they frequent that park, and if you look at that park, before we leave that park, all my players, my coaching staff, church members, we clean that park up, so we're teaching some things, and we're talking about a team. You said that you talked to them and they made a promise, I don't know who them if they are, but I don't recall anyone coming into our school if there was a big problem, maybe getting our student body together and letting the student body know, hey, look, this is the problem, this is the issue, address each school district and let the school district know what they have a chance at losing if they don't take care of it. That not one time ever happened, so the kids were aware of what's going on. And not only that, I mean, you're talking about things that you've done, there's a relationship piece that has to be taken in place, and there aren't any relationships that are being developed between, you know, the police authority and these kids. I mean, the only relationship that's established is when they're being incarcerated. So you want people to come and talk to you and let you know things, they're not going to talk to you because there's a division there, there's no relationship piece there. There are a number of people that you could use as team members, you say Team Williamsport, I don't know who's on the team, I know I was never a proserizer in...
Anybody who wants to be...
But understand what I'm saying, you've already taken something away from our kids that was a very positive thing, and how is that going to affect our programs as we... How is that affecting our programs? No, because I'm going to tell you like this. You got Kennedy King, which I was a part of, that shut down, okay? So what happened? You moved next to Newbury, you take Newbury Parks down. I was upset about Newbury, I said some things about Newbury, but I said, okay, we got Newbury, we got Memorial, we got the other park, okay? Then you lose the community center, which is the hub of the community. It's like, where are our kids supposed to go, and what do you think they're going to do? What are our options are we going to have? But here's what I'm saying.
Let him finish, you interrupted him.
Here's what I'm saying.
Guys, talk the two out.
You take the hub away, so now you don't, what, what positive mentors do you have out there? Now you're taking all the positive mentors out of the community, so now, yeah, now you've got the drug dealers coming out there and the kids, that's what the kids have to look back to them.
Are you aware, are you aware the administration is sending a police officer to the schools to teach them about drug prevention? That only, the only school district is St. John Newman, and no one else wanted to participate in that. So we are doing something here, we are doing something, we are doing something positive.
Nothing, nothing, I, I don't, I, this, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, why was, why were the hoops taken down? Is it because of the liquor, or is it because of drugs?
The same line.
That's indirect, that's not causational, that's not, that's not direct causation.
Next question.
That's not direct causation.
My name is Bruce Lundigan, I live on fifteen forty-four Scott Street. Yeah, I'm also a counselor in the social work, I've been in social work for twenty years, I've worked without a lesson. Also a veteran, maybe in special forces, and kind of been, I'm also a person in recovery, been on both sides of this issue. I've also been a person for the substance abuse problem, went through that, also learned how to address that, solve that problem, become a productive member of society. And I think as a result of doing that, I'm more equipped to see both sides, and that's what I've been trained to do. And I just want to say that everything I've heard in here is valid, you know, and I think, and the mayor had asked the chief to put this Team Williamsport together, because my, my dad's a retired cop, and sometimes criminal justice people get caught up in fighting crimes, you know, they don't understand the social aspects of it. And I want to say that I thank the chief for, and I had a personal conversation with him, he said he don't know what to do. That's why he's bringing us together, and this gentleman up here who spoke, that's a solution. And that's the kind of thing I think that the, the chief wants to hear, right?
I want him on my team.
You want him on your team, right, because I believe that is part of the problem, that if we, you know, the war on drugs has been going on for, for years, and all we did was fill our prisons, all right? We didn't treat the problem. You can't punish substance abuse into, into recovery, right? There has to be a treatment. And I think that the, what I'm hearing tonight is that the solution is, we as a community, as soon as I said we failed our kids, we as a community have to come together and be involved like that gentleman was saying, right? Put these programs together, get out there in the parks, be role models for these kids to create and, see, what has happened through the years across the nation, there's apathy.